Good morning.
You want this question?
Yeah.
I'm good, I'm good, thank you. We have a few items on the agenda for today. First off, we have the July 3 findings minutes to approve.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Motion of second to approve. Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The minutes are approved. There are two items that should have been on here that aren't. I'm gonna start with Brandon Sanders on the bridge fund because I think we all could use some good news.
Alright, I'll start off with that. I had some last minute discussions with Endot for the past couple of weeks and kinda went through discussing with them the shortages that we had at the beginning of the project and the difficulties we were facing with the additional patching. And they have agreed to give us an additional funding amount to cover the patching overrun, which just the patching overrun underneath the arches and the piers was coming in about $800,000. So, they have agreed to get, match 80% of that. So that's very good news for us. And that also includes keeping the safety fence. I know that was a topic for discussion, possibly removing. But they want us, so part of the agreement of giving us that money was to continue on with all of the original items that we had in our contract originally, so we could complete the project as it was intended. So, that's very good news for us. So, the appropriations report is that we came before you last month and it was advertised for, I think, $250,000, I think was what we were thinking. That number can be reduced to about $160,000, which that would be the 20% match of the $800,000. We still have other items that we could possibly remove as a cost savings measure, like not removing the access pass. We've talked to the city and the Indian American Water. They would like to keep the stone paths that we put in to access underneath the bridge. They wanna keep those in place, so therefore that's another cost savings to us. So, in the end of the contract, we will come up with a number for the change order. So it should be anywhere between probably $700,000, $800,000. And then Endot will match that at 80% and we will pay the balance. So, my request to you is we could either hold off on that appropriation until we get closer to the end of the contract to know exactly what that number's gonna be. Or we could, you could approve, you know, say $200,000. That should be plenty enough to cover it. As well as gonna offer you guys whether we wanted to do that now or wait.
Do they have a question for today?
Yes.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Do you wanna act today or do you wanna wait? And we can if it's been advertised, but...
My thought would be wait till, if there's no prior, should wait till we know more appropriately the number and approve that. So I don't think there will be any action required today to do that.
Correct. If there's no action required, we don't need the money upfront. We'll just wait till the end of the contract when they settle up and do the audit of the project and then they'll come up with a number for us at that time.
Okay.
Any, any other news on the bridges?
The 701 was opened up yesterday, so we got that opened up. Milestone worked really hard over the weekend to get that opened up for the students and the motors.
South G?
Oh, G.
South G Street, yes.
You know, by numbers.
Yes. And then the next item was the sample road project, Bridge 76. That went to letting on July 10th. It came in about $200,000 less than what the engineer estimated. And Endot was able to match about $200,000. I know we were originally projecting a shortfall of about $650,000. And that number has now dropped to $343,000. So I know originally on that one, we were asking for an additional appropriation of $650,000. But I would be comfortable recommending that we drop that down to $250,000, which that will cover our construction inspection amount. And that's, that should be it. I know the project's gonna start here in a couple of weeks. We've got a pre-construction meeting in two weeks. But as of now, that would be the only other obligation we would need from the additional appropriation side would be the $250,000.
Okay, we can handle that as well at the same time. Does the other one? So by my calculation, we're over a million ahead of where we thought we were going to be on the two bridges.
Yes, very close.
So, that's, that's a lot of money that we, that made me very nervous last month, so...
And what I'm hearing from Endot is on the July call, because their fiscal years are July to June, across the board, not just our district, but across the state, there was a lot of projects that came in under. So hopefully, not all of this is a projection of how Endot's fiscal year's gonna be, which could open up some more funding availability later. We just don't know it at this time, so we're hoping for the best.
Are other entities putting off, slowing down on doing bridges because of this increase?
I think there were some projects, for what I've, I don't know specifically which ones, but there were projects that did not let because of the funding shortages that they were facing.
And just for the public, in the past, we would have had that funding. And last month, we learned that they were not matching a lot of those projects. And so, we were gonna be responsible for over $1 million more in the cost of the bridges that were in process. So, can't emphasize enough, great, great job in communicating with them and working with them and getting that additional funding, Brandon.
Ron? Ron? If I could put my hat on as council for Richmond Community Schools, I would wanna publicly thank Brandon and also Milestone for the efforts they put in to make sure that G Street Bridge was open for start of school yesterday, at least for school bus and pedestrian traffic. All you have to do is drive by there when school's out or when school's starting, just before it starts to realize the significant amount of foot traffic that bridge gets from students at the high schools. So, it was much appreciated by the administration for your efforts and certainly for Milestones. And we probably owe, thank the contractor every now and then when they go out above and beyond what they might have to do in the most expedient way to do the job. They responded well, and so that's very much appreciated.
Thank you. That would've been a real hassle for Richmond High School to not have that bridge open because it's several minutes more, you know, 10, 15 minutes more for buses if that was not open, so...
So Brandon, on the list of bridges, I get questioned periodically. I know Jeff has about Heidi Road. You might update us on what's it gonna happen on.
Yes, so that one is still slated for going to letting in October. And, you know, at this time, we're still facing that same funding shortage of $765,000. So I would probably be back a month or so. When we get our final engineer's estimate, I'll update that number for you and then probably go through the additional appropriation request for that. And with that, going through our bridge fund, the bridge fund should be able to absorb that for this year and that cost.
Any other questions for Brandon? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did we want to do the sample road request for $250,000?
It was advertised differently.
It was advertised?
Differently. No, it was advertised for Richmond.
But it's less than what it was advertised for, right?
Yeah.
Well, the one, we're gonna wait till you get the final number.
Correct.
But that's probably the same one.
And the other one?
Same as the one that was advertised.
Same, yeah, that was advertised as well.
It wasn't advertised, was it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But it was advertised at a higher amount.
Correct.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
We can do that.
We can appropriate that or less.
We can do that.
Okay.
If I have the motion.
So what's the amount that you need appropriate?
I would recommend dropping that number down to $250,000.
I would move that we approve the appropriation of $250,000 for the sample road bridge.
For the bridge fund?
Yeah.
Motion of second. Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Mike Sharp is gonna give us a quick update on the budget and where they stand. And it's, it's nothing different than any other year in that the final numbers aren't established until a few months from now, so go ahead, Mike.
So we got our numbers from Mark through the state and what they're projecting us for 2025. So for what the budget I presented to you and the increases, we pretty much kinda kept it the 2024 budget and then added increases where I thought was needed. So at this time, with that budget that was presented to you, local ruin of the street needs to cut about $113,652 out of it. And then the MBH fund would need to cut $1,074,421. So it's quite a big chunk. The way it's kind of been progressing over the last couple of years is we've had high years and then the next year goes low and then it's high and it's low. This year was a high year. So I was expecting to have a pretty good chunk that we'd have to cut, but till you get the figures. So my thought was is if we wanna kinda hold off, kinda wait, we might be able to de-appropriate some money out of 2024. We're about done with our strip sealing program. Still waiting on the state to get on board with hitting our community crossings and we can do our single sealing and our paving. But that'll become now that jail bond money fund. So I think we'll have some money left over after we get done with our summer projects that will be able to de-appropriate some money out of 2024. So then that's less that we have to de-appro, or drop the budget in 2025. So the state ultimately, I think, will come in and say, you know, at some point in time, you need to cut X dollars for this budget to pass through. And so we still have some time. So instead of going through and making all those cuts and then we have to appropriate money in for 2025 if there's extra money left over, I thought if you guys are on board with it, that we just kinda hold off on that at this point in time. And then as we get closer, we can keep it alive before you actually pass the budgets through, that we can make some changes. So I went through the budget. I've got where we can make, cut that, what we would cut out through. And I've got a list of where that would come from. So it's not something that I have to think about long. I mean, we can make those changes fairly quick and go through it and then make that decision. If you guys are okay with that.
And we've done that in the past. Mike and I talked, just a reminder, they, the state's looking at it from July of 2024 to December of 2025. So if we've got some funds that we are not spending in 2024, he won't have to adjust his budget down by that amount. So my thoughts were, we still have time there and we can, we can deal with that in the next month or two.
On their new projection, they, they've got us coming in shortcoming from what they projected us from July through December of this year. They've lowered that amount what they projected us to receive. But since January, what we've looked at, anywhere from 4% to 15%, 14%, we've been getting more than what they projected. So unless something changes drastically here this month, we're still getting more even though they're projecting us to get less. So it's kind of a state thing, but I don't know that they're fully on board, know what they're doing.
High wind funding is going to be a major question with the legislature this next winter. Jeff and I were in a meeting and Kathy that this was discussed. And one of the issues that's contributing to this is increased gas mileage vehicles. So a period of time here has reduced the amount of gas sold and that reduces. Yeah, electric vehicles. But it's, a lot of it is the increased gas mileage, which means less gas is being sold and less tax money collected on that, which goes directly into what he's talking about. The state legislature is well aware of this and there's going to be some very in-depth discussion with the legislature about that.
Kind of the way they've done it, the state keeps on taking more of that percentage from what the locals, the cities and the counties are getting through throughout too. So I think it's, I know my association's aware of it and they're fighting with the state on. You know, they keep on taking more and more and giving us less, so hopefully we can get that worked out.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
We have a few transfers that I don't think will take very long versus looking at the full budgets of the EDC tourism and sheriff. So Debbie, as she's coming up, Ron, do you have a question?
I had a question on your action items regarding the budgets. Is it anticipated you'll hear those budgets today or is it anticipated you'll take final action and approve?
We will hear those budgets today.
You will not vote on them?
That's correct.
Okay, then that allows Barry to continue to participate. If you were going to take a vote on those budgets, that would be something that would not be permitted for virtual attendance.
No, we won't be doing that until October.
Just wanna get that clarified.
Okay, Debbie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here because we had a deficit in our group health insurance and out of the clerk's perpetuation fund. So what created the deficit used to, during the previous auditor's administration, that was never deducted of that employee who her salary is half out of county general and half out of clerk's perpetuation. So those monies were transferred out of our perpetuation fund, so we need to cover that. So I'm asking that we transfer it from an account to cover that, which is account number 11060. That is a deputy clerk position. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to address this, but I need to move that employee to that one because she no longer works in perpetuation records at all. Since we're going with SBS, her duties has changed, so she doesn't do anything with restoring and preserving court records.
Okay. First off, Ron, does the group health have to come out of the perpetuation fund?
Well, I don't think it's a requirement. I think it's an option that allows you to relieve the general fund. Isn't that right? I mean, that's basically the concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I...
And that changed three years ago. Because it never was taken out before.
Our practice changed, not the state.
Yes.
Our, okay, our practice changed that we were gonna pay it out of? I never thought we were.
I can't speak to that.
I don't think anyone here tell me can speak to that because it was the previous administration. It wasn't anything that, you know... And I had an account that I used to be able to pay both of my interns out of that one account and then that stopped. So those were changes that were made three years ago.
Okay. So we'd either do the transfer or we could, excuse me, we could do a journal entry back to the general fund, right? And have the money come out of the general fund?
Yeah. I mean, because if we transfer it from that line item that I gave you, 11060, that's, you know, a deputy clerk in the general fund.
Right. I'm just saying, does everybody understand what I'm saying? I don't think we ever intended for the health insurance to come out of the perpetuation fund.
It never used to.
Why would we not wanna take it out of there if it were available? To save the fund.
Well, if it's gonna cause it to run into deficit, right?
Yeah, and I don't have the monies now because that goes, you know, towards health insurance and salaries rather than preserving the court records.
Tell me if I...
Kathy?
Debbie, did you have something after that?
I can allude to this. When I was in bookkeeper in probation, for the first few years I worked, we had health insurance in our budget, but the auditor's office at that time said, "Well, just keep it in the budget, we won't do anything." And about three years ago, all of a sudden, they started taking it out of our grant funds or these others, which really put a bind on us. And now that I'm in this position, we were trying to figure it, you know, we were continuing that. But I understand the hardship that it's on them. So I guess I'm explaining this to you, that I experienced it in probation. And I guess questioning, do you want us just to have all health insurance out of the county general? Because what we basically are doing now is taking it out, if it's a non-county general fund, we're taking it out of that and then reimbursing county general for what already county general paid.
I think we've always looked at it, can the fund, can the perpetuation fund absorb it or not? And if it can't, then it was in the general fund.
You have several funds that, other than this one, that that would affect also. And I'm dealing with Mr. Corey or George in one of the grants that they have of where we're charging the insurance to that fund or to that grant. And they've hired more people, they've done different things, salary increases. And so that those grants can no longer sustain all of the costs that were, that were put on them. And some of this is gonna have to go to the county general fund. The thing to move would be the health insurance because that's a cost to the employees that we can move.
I think all we simply need to do is move that, that cost.
Go ahead.
Journalize it, move it to the general fund because I don't think it was intended... We knew the perpetuation fund couldn't fund it. And so it was supposed to be out of the general fund.
So I guess my question to you is...
But on the others, it's, we would need to know...
Analyze each one.
Who, yeah, where it's being paid out of and whether it has the capacity, you know, to pay that or not. So I think here, all we need to do is move those payments over from the perpetuation fund to the general fund because that was, that was the original intent. Is there any other thoughts on that?
You're saying move the expenditures over? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the health insurance expenditures over. That will increase your perpetuation fund. You know, they'll kinda do the same thing.
Yeah.
So I think that's all we need to do, Debbie.
So can, can we address that deputy, moving her to the general fund and then closing that line item where she's paid out of half county general and half perpetuation? Because I have, that's the, that is the one that, you know, I was gonna transfer that money from to cover that deficit. And that way she, since she no longer works with the court records.
So Debbie, you could, you could, question is, you can move the money to cover what you need to do with her. You just need permission to put her totally into the general fund.
Correct.
So have you gone through HR and done a new job description?
Well, I'm, since I was doing this transfer, that's what I said. I don't know if now's the appropriate time to address that. But if I, I just thought, yesterday when I spoke with the auditor's office, you know, put it on the table and see what council instructed me to do. So that's...
I think it needs to be moved. We need to know where to transfer money. You need to look in your budget and see where you can transfer money to pay for that in the...
The money's there.
Pardon?
The money's there.
It's already in there.
The other half from, the half for the perpetuation?
Full amount for her salary, that I was transferring that $39,000. I could move her to that and then her expenses, you know, would just come out of that fund.
Out of the general fund?
Because there's no one being paid.
But I thought half of her salary was in the general fund and half in the perpetuation.
It is now, but if I move...
So if we move her over, aren't we short?
There's, there's a line item that I have not paid out of it all year for a deputy clerk.
Okay, so you need to do a transfer.
Yeah. If I have permission to do that.
You have an opening and then...
Opening? Yes.
Okay. I think probably we can, we can address that next month. But get the transfer line items and get, and fill out the paperwork and we'll, we'll take care of that.
For, in that review for my budget next year or can we do that in the middle of this year?
We can do it.
Okay, yeah, we can do it now.
I had the question, how would you address this in 25 budget requests?
I did not. I need to put that in the 25 budget request. Because this deficit, I was notifying it after I had presented my budget, my deposit.
So when we get to budget discussion, you need to address that as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming over. Barry? Barry Callahan, Wayne Township Assessor, has a transfer request.
This transfer is for my chief deputy. She got her level two and the stipend. I believe the salary ordinance is correct, but the budget needs to be, have money moved from one line item. And I think removing that from my part-time position of 13480, that needs to be moved into the chief deputy position at 10202.
Okay. And Kim was here.
He didn't work there.
Oh, you moved positions on me. That is in the salary ordinance. Can you confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, so we just need the transfer. She has received her appropriate level two?
Yes.
And therefore that, a level two as a compensation of an additional $1,000 upon achieving the level two status? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we transfer 99948 from 1,013,480 payroll to the 1,10202.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the transfer. Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Gary.
It's all right.
Phil Jenny, congratulations.
Thank you.
Gina Glass, you've got a few transfers here.
Yes, a few.
Okay.
My first request would be to add some additional accounts into the Department of Correction Grant Fund that we manage. Those accounts to be added would be 22210 for gasoline, 33240 for cellphone data, 33470 for insurance, and 33620 for copier maintenance. So that would be my first request.
Okay, and this is from Fund 9027, the D O C Grant Fund.
Okay, and this is from Fund 9027, the DOC Grant Fund. It's a grant. Are there any questions on this first request to establish four line items?
I'm going to recreate those line items as much as I can.
Moved by Beth?
Second.
Seconded by Gary. Any questions? Jeff?
No, yes, I'm sorry.
Notice question.
I had a question, yes to prove.
I tripped you. Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay, go ahead, Gina.
Thank you. The following transfer request would be to utilize grant funds and to save or minimize spending from user fee-based funds that do not generate steady revenue. So all of the following transfers would be within the Department of Correction Grant Fund, 9027. So the first transfer request would be from 13670 out of health insurance in the amount of $17,477.76. And those, that money would be transferred partially to 33200 for contractual professional services in the amount of $15,714.86. Then another portion would go to Fund Number 22210 for gasoline for the work crew van in the amount of $762.90. Another portion of that would go to Fund Number 33620 for copier maintenance in the amount of $800. And lastly, 33470 is the account number for insurance for the work crew van and volunteer insurance in the amount of $200.
Okay, Gina's request is to transfer a total of $17,477.76 into funding these four line items that we created. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Kathy, seconded by Gary. Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion approved. And you've got a transfer from FICA into a couple line items that looks like to take care of the rest of the year's expenses and those?
Yes, yes. $1,500 from FICA, Account Number 13650, into Account Number 33240 for cell phone data in the amount of $960.50. And Account 22210 for another transfer into gasoline for the amount of $539.50.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I'll also make the motion to approve that one.
Second.
All those in favor will individually say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Did you say aye, Kathy?
I did.
Okay, and Gary did. Beth?
Aye.
Aye.
Max? Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, your next one?
Tony, the minutes should reflect, the actual amount was $539.50. As Gina said, I think the agenda that I'm looking at has type O in it.
Yeah, it's been corrected.
It's been corrected on orders.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, Gina.
Okay. Let's see, the third transfer would be from the part-time worker position, Account Number 13500 in the amount of $229.40. That would be transferred to 13660 for Perth in the amount of $199.60. And also Account Number 22210 for gasoline in the amount of $29.80. Motion to approve.
Very.
With Jeff's?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max? Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And your last one, the transfer for $667.80.
That would come from Account 10474 for case manager and transferred into 22210 for gasoline, again, in the amount of $667.80. And that would conclude my transfer request.
Second.
Motion of second, Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max? Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thanks a lot, Gina, we appreciate it. Jeff Plaster, are you gonna be around?
I will be.
You look at the sound.
All right. Now we'll start with the budgets that we have not seen. There are three budgets. The first up is the EDC budget. Val, come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know sometimes we have time for me to give an EDC update, other times you want to get straight to the budget. What is your pledge?
Let's do an EDC update.
Okay. Well, it has been a busy summer. A lot of times, summers slow down a little bit as everyone's on vacation. This summer is not the case. In terms of business development, over the last 18 months, we've been able to work with several different employers who collectively are in the process of investing just under $470 million. Some in new facilities, others in new equipment. But collectively, those seven projects are in the process of creating 271 new jobs. And we were happy to retain about 352 jobs through that process as well. As it relates to community development, we've been really busy working through the health projects that the EDC has been a part of. Sarah Mitchell sat on the Main Street Revitalization Grant Program Scoring Committee. And as you know, the EDC is in the process of rolling out the Blight Elimination Program for Wayne County. It looks like we're gonna tear down about 43 or 44 homes over the course of the next year, working through all of the participating cities, unsafe building commissions, and help alleviate some stress from their budgets and helping to fund those demolition projects. Ready 2 is in full swing. So as you recall, the region, East Central Indiana, received a $35 million allocation from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And so right now, we're in the process of evaluating projects that have been submitted for funding consideration. All of those applications closed last Friday. I don't know exactly how many Wayne County projects will be submitted, but I will learn this Thursday during the Steering Committee meeting. And moving forward, over the next week, Beth Leisure, Jeff Plaster, Mayor Olar, myself, and Akasia St. John will be scoring all of Wayne County's project submissions to come up with a top five list that we want to move on to the region. And then amongst the eight counties, 40 projects will then be scored to come up with our project list that we will present to the IEDC for funding consideration. So it will be a busy August reviewing and scoring all of those projects, but trying to put our best foot forward and hoping that we have a couple of projects that would be funded from those dollars. In addition to the $35 million allocation, Eli Lilly contributed another $250 million for Ready 2. And they decided that $65 million of those dollars would be used for arts and culture projects, and then $185 million for blight elimination and redevelopment. So as part of our call for projects that just closed, entities could also submit requests for those funds. The EDC decided to submit two projects on our own, on behalf of Wayne County, really leveraging those two health programs that I mentioned, the Main Street Revitalization Program and the Blight Elimination Program, leveraging those public dollars that were already committed to try to double down and receive a matching allocation from the IEDC through those Lilly blight dollars. So we're hoping that through those efforts, we'll be able to expand the projects and the impact that that will have throughout the county. In addition to that, downtown development, it's been busy with that. Our Elder Beerman Redevelopment Project, we're finally seeing some movement on the timeline there. Beth Fields at the City of Richmond, she is handling the demolition of the current building. Bins are due, I think, next week. And based on the timeline, the building should be down by Thanksgiving. So I know that has been a financial strain on the county maintaining that building, but that is soon going to come to an end. The design is almost complete with the architectural firm that's working on behalf of Flaherty and Collins for that new $150 million market rate apartment complex. And so hopefully, we'll be seeing some of those designs soon and be happy to share that with all of you. I know the loan agreement is still a document that you want to have some input on as it relates to the funding coming from the Consolidated Edit and ensuring that those funds are protected and have appropriate clawbacks. We will still intend to share that with you for your feedback when we have a draft of that. In addition to the Elder Beerman Project, the EDC has been involved in the Revitalize Richmond Program. It's that $25 million grant from Eli Lilly that Orlin received. We have been working with a private developer who's looking at acquiring and redeveloping numerous properties downtown. Collectively, we're hoping that will have an impact of adding anywhere from 100 to 120 new downtown living units. So it's really exciting to think about that in conjunction with Elder Beerman, you know, new families, people living downtown, visiting the businesses and services downtown. That will only help sustain the commercial district and hopefully attract more retail and services downtown. Housing is also a new sector the EDC has been working in. Just on Monday evening, we worked really hard to gain support from Richmond Common Council to pass the rezoning of South 37th Street. That will result in 178 new single-family homes and 110 townhomes that are desperately needed. The housing study that the EDC commissioned back in December states that we need 450 housing units per year for the next five years in Wayne County to keep up with demand. So if you think about the downtown revitalization that's going on in conjunction with Smith Hill, as well as an expansion that we're working on with Chester Heights Apartments, who's looking to acquire an unutilized city park to add another 72 units, collectively, we're starting to make a dent in our housing needs. Additionally, Sarah Mitchell worked really closely with a housing developer who applied for low-income housing tax credits for 44 affordable units in our community that will take advantage of some of the blight elimination lots and do some infill housing for leased purchase options for low-income individuals. So we're really focused on hype, hitting all of those income levels of housing needs within Wayne County. Lastly, I'll mention industrial park development. We've been working with the Richmond Sanitary District on an upgrade to the sewer pipes that go from the Midwest Industrial Park to the wastewater treatment plant. That is currently in the process of engineering right now. We were fortunate that you all gave us support of contributing $1 million to that engineering for the City of Richmond, and so that is still underway. And then shifting to the Gateway Industrial Park, we are still working with the Town of Cambridge City on the planning and construction of a new water tower. We did successfully submit a grant to the EDA for about $2.8 million to cover about half the cost of that water tower. We should know here in a couple months if those efforts were successful. Happy to answer any questions you have about the work that we're doing?
Any questions from council? If not, we'll go ahead and move forward with your budget for 2025.
Okay, so you have before you our 2025 budget draft estimate. The total amount is $802,973.50. This is an increase of $27,378.73 over 2024, which is about a 3.5% increase. The majority of that increase, as it typically is, it lands in personnel services as we look at salary increases for the year. I do want to point out that the salary page that you have before you, my salary is just a projection that my board chair encouraged me to put in. My contract with the EDC is up at the end of the year. And so I'm still waiting for the board to bring forth a contract renewal proposal to me. And I believe Pete is talking to you all about that process. If he hasn't yet, he should be in terms of what that extension would look like. In terms of salaries, due to the Department of Labor's new ruling, we will have one employee moving from exempt to non-exempt in 2025. And so for that reason, for the first time, you'll see line item 1364 in overtime budget. I budgeted just a nominal amount of $2,000 for the year just to give us a little bit of flexibility with that position because things do come up that require staying a little later when we're on tight timelines for project submissions, annual meeting, things of that nature. And so then increase in salaries, that then, as you know, increases federal payroll taxes as well as retirement since the EDC contributes a percentage of wages to the retirement fund. Health insurance did go up just a tad. We were told to budget for a 15% increase, as we always are. Last year, we were fortunate to only have a 4% increase. So when you look at the budget from 2024 to 2025, based on actual expenses, we're not seeing that big of a jump because it was only a 4%. So you'll see we'll be significantly under budget in 2024 for our employee health insurance. So that's personnel services, that increased $25,083 as compared to 2024. Our total supplies line item, that actually decreased by $110. So then moving into other services and charges, we are proposing an increase of $2,000 for 3323 travel, lodging, and meals, as well as an increase of $5,000 from 3392 advertising and PR. We're preparing for some significant updates to the EDC's website next year, as well as to the Home in Wayne website, which is our talent recruitment retention website. So moving, so for total other services, that category did increase by $7,405 in total. Lastly, capital outlays, we actually decreased that section by $5,000 as compared to 2024. We only have to replace one computer next year. So again, in total, about a 3.5% increase over 2024.
Thank you. All right, any questions? We'll take the budget under recommendation and in October, we'll get it finalized.
Okay, and I will let you know when my salary number is final.
That should be part of that contract.
Pete Celeste.
Pete Celeste.
Do you want to address the unit contribution agreement at this time?
Sure.
As well? Okay. So a couple of months ago, we approved the new four-year extension, the contract between Wayne County Government and the EDC for us to be the lead economic development agency for Wayne County. With that, the next step is to ask you all to renew your unit contribution agreement for four years, which commits 50% of your edit tax revenue to the Consolidated Edit Fund that, as you know, funds the EDC's operating budget as well as other projects that we come to you for funding support. You are the first unit of government that I am talking to about this. You will kick off a series of meetings where I will be going on a tour of town councils across Wayne County, seeking support from our existing contributors, but then also going to all units to see if anyone else has a desire to participate in the next four years. We already know that East Germantown, they want to participate. And so I think that's very positive that a community came to us and said, "We want to be a part of what you're doing and contribute half of our revenue to support you." So we're hoping maybe some other communities will feel the same way and want to join. So Ron, are there any details about the contract that you would like to point out?
Only changed the dates. We updated the statute last week.
I would like a motion for, pardon?
They still let me decide these matters.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to allow Beth to sign the agreement that Wayne County will provide 50% of their edit funds into the Consolidated Fund for the next four years.
Yes, 2025 through 2028.
Yes, as I said last time, you're doing this more or less as a symbolic endorsement of the concept of pooled funding that the Consolidated Edit represents. The actual decision is that of the executive body, which is the commissioners, and they'll obviously consider it too.
All right.
Second.
A motion by Gary, second by Jeff. Jeff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Barry? And I vote aye as well. Anything else, Val?
That's it today.
Any other questions, council? All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks for all you do, Val, and we appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the tourism budget, and Mary Wapner. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning. Each of you have received prior to today's meeting sometime last week or the week prior our 2025- our 2025 budget. I did bring additional copies of things if in fact you need them.
Everybody have their copy?
Everyone have one? And Mark, I brought you one as well. No one needs much of a copy of budget? I also brought our, that was also included with your budget booklet, our budget revenue projection sheet, et cetera, et cetera. If you need copies of those, I have those as well. All good?
You want to go ahead and go into your budget first, and then we'll talk about...
Sure.
Health and...
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I know we're, I'll keep my comments brief. I know you find that hard to believe, however, but... So with regards to our 2025 budget, based on our revenues that we're seeing currently over a 12-month period, and that's this sheet that you all have received, that, those are actual revenues, and what you see in the first five months essentially is an average increase of 15%. Our May collections received in June, we are down 2.94, and will probably be down again in July. And the reason for that is we have several hoteliers that are doing, have rooms down due to renovating their properties. So obviously, when they're down, they're not renting their rooms. But you can see with a 15% increase in the typical slower months, we're anticipating that to continue, especially for 2025, when the rooms are completed, because always the winter months are the slower. So we're very encouraged by the increase in revenues. With regards to budget, we are proposing an overall budget. I will, I will say, most of you may know, and if Chris Beeson is listening, our debt service ends the end of this year. Chris would always ask, "When does the debt service end?" It ends the end of this year. So in 2025, there is no more debt service, so we have included that amount into our budget. And so we have essentially looked at now a budget of $1,213,230. Will be our 2025 operating and promotional budget. If we go through a category by category, administrative, we're looking at a total administrative budget of $133,915, which is about a 5.8% increase. Looking at supplies, $12,050, which is slightly over 48%, but it's basically $4,000. Sounds a lot, but it's not. Services and charges, $114,694. Capital outlays, $66,000. Now, there is a sizable increase, and what the board wanted to do is to put in for an office car. We currently have one, and it's been, we've had it paid off since 2005, and so I'm probably the frugal one on that. But we went on ahead and put a potential for a purchase price or lease, that's still to be determined, but certainly, as you can see, we tend to keep vehicles, in a way, so, which helps the budget overall. And then promotion is where the, essentially, the debt service monies went into and other increases in revenues. That is now $886,571, which is a 25% increase for a total budget of $1,213,230. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have on any of the others.
Thanks for getting this to us last week. Are there any questions that you have, Mary?
Chris Beeson usually watches the videos of these.
Does he? Hi, Chris.
Quite often asks me a question or two about what we...
Well, he'll appreciate the shout-out.
Yes, he will, and I'll make sure that he has to watch this, but appreciate it. Also, we just need to emphasize to the public that this budget is fully funded from the innkeeper's tax. It's not property tax, it's not income tax, it's not even, unless you rent a motel room in this county, you're not contributing to this.
Thank you for saying that.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that, the public.
Mary and her team do a fantastic job. It's my pleasure to sit on their board, and anybody, if you ever want to sit on a board, it has to be on tour. It's fun as board can have a family.
It's a fun industry.
It's no, but we get, we get things done, and they do a great job. And very frugal, we had to twist her arm behind her back to make her look at a vehicle this year, so, you know.
It's still working!
Mary, I can't remember, do you normally give your comments now or when we approve your budget?
It really depends. I asked Beth if there were no questions, if you wanted Valerie and I to come back, and she said that that may not be necessary, so I could just briefly...
Sure. Go right ahead.
Whatever's good, but I will keep them brief. So one of the things that Jeff and Valerie have mentioned about the help program, I'll take this real quick, and I think I've got plenty. So what I'm distributing is, we were part of the help program, we were responsible for the Wayne County mural program, working with communities in health and outside of health. And so what I wanted to do, because it's really moving along quickly, there you go. So we are right on timeline for these murals. We are having 10 additional murals throughout Wayne County to include Richmond. And then we also recently, mid-July, had a community mural that was in Dublin at the skating rink, which was awesome. I don't know if any of you were able to attend. That's the last page where you'll see a small version of this fairly large wall. But we are right on target. The timeline is to have all murals completed by the end of August, and then start with the, it is a competitive program, so there will be a first, second, and third prize, and the judges will go around to all of the murals and then score them, and there'll be a first, second, and third winner. But what you'll see in the information is, this is the wall, you'll see where originally on this first one, they were looking at a long or a cross. The artist can make that decision, there's no additional money, but he's decided to do the whole wall. So you'll see that in a lot of different designs, but these are really coming to fruition. So even like in the Depot District, where you have, the artist is from Toronto, Canada, that is a huge wall. And so just take a look at these, I won't spend a lot of time on them, but they really are wonderful works of art, and they add so much to an area, a district, but, and I'll have to do a shout-out to Economy, theirs was one of the first ones that was done. And I've heard so many wonderful, so it's in your packet, but I've heard great comments about Economy and how proud they are, and it's just really brightened up the gymnasium, because you can see the before picture, you see the after picture. So it really has been a wonderful project. We talk about building pride in our citizens, and so this is kind of like a twofer, or even a threefer, where you build the pride in, with the citizens, but you also, through visitors, also build that pride and that, wow, this is really cool. And then even from an economic development, I mean, it just brightens up and it shows that we, as a community, have pride. So we're really excited about that, and finishing up yet this month. Also, wanted to say, we've received our Wayne County Economic Impact through Visitor Spending. We do a report co-op every year with the State of Indiana. This is the most current year, is 2022. So Wayne County has experienced $160 million of economic impact through visitor spending, and this is just one short year. When we started, the Economic Impact Reports was in 2012. So in just 10 short years, we have increased that 89.2%. It was $84.6 million in 2012, we are now at $160, 160 million. So that's kind of, kind of really cool, and it just goes to show that tourism is alive and well, even through COVID. The next year, people were ready to travel and get out and about, and so we're just excited about all the different opportunities, excited about those things that economic development is working on, even things like housing. You know, there really are some points that intersect with regards to amenities. So we're always looking to grow our amenities. The more we grow our population, the more amenities we grow. And so that helps tourism, as well as economic development and housing, and growing our population, which is critical. So anyway, it's wonderful to work with such a great team, with Valerie and her group, and Melissa and her group, Rebecca Gilliam with the Foundation, and so many others. I mean, there really is a collaborative spirit in all of us working together for each other's goals, and so that's, that's exciting. So I'll close with that. I have others, but I know it's a little tense, so.
We appreciate it. Any, any questions or comments?
I'd like to comment on the economy project mural. That is ribbed metal on that building. If you looked at the picture, it looks like wood. That artist does a tremendous job.
Thank you.
So I'll go number one.
Is that your vote?
That's a little biased.
Just a little bit, but you could actually see this for a portion of 35.
Yes.
The lower west, you can see, you can see it there, so.
And Gary's going to work on getting that more visual, too, working with the...
Trees are popular, they're back in, travel back and cut them down. So it's a part of the visual. Ready?
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
And thank you all for all of your support, day in, day out, and my board support, commissioner's support. It really means a lot, so thank you. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we're going to look at the Sheriff's Budget, and then I promise you, we'll recess if, yes, we want a break after the, after the sheriff. So all the pressure's on you.
I know, and I've got to leave by telling you, I have a couple of other small items that I wanted to ask about, to know whether you want me to address the budget first or the small items.
Let's do the small items.
Okay, perfect. So first one is a request for some money in the, if you recall, there's a line item for training of employees or staff. We've recently had a vacancy in our part-time staff, and I also have one of my full-time staff that's on maternity leave, and I've got another one that's going to be on maternity leave in about six weeks. So it's really impacting my ability to operate normally throughout the day in this. By adding a few weeks to allow me to retain an employee, to help train the others, would be very, very beneficial for operations at the sheriff's office. I've got it actually broken down in a couple of different ways, and it would be at the pleasure of the council, since this is actually something fairly new, and definitely something new to my office that I've not utilized before, but it would be extremely beneficial considering the fact that I've got staff members off on maternity leave, to be able to have two, eight weeks of part-time pay, which would total, without FICA, would total $4,220.8. It's 29 hours per week, and the pay rate is $18.19 per hour from FICA, I believe. If that is taken from that fund, and I don't have that answer, that's an additional 7.65%.
And this is from what?
Well, he's wanting to use our training dollars, but I, I, we didn't discuss eight weeks.
No, and...
What's the other way you have it broken down?
Yeah, I realize that. We could, you know, four weeks would be better than nothing, and if that's possible, that would be $2,110.04. But I was reminded of the other employee that's taking off in just six weeks, I think, for maternity leave.
If you do need money for eight weeks, do you have some money to transfer for that?
Probably from, from...
To cover that one?
Unused salary.
Yeah. Usually, our, our training dollars are for a couple weeks if somebody coming in on a new job.
It doesn't quite fit what our line was set up to do. I think it would be more appropriate to transfer from available funds in your personnel line items, and put that in a line item that's special for this. That'd be my thought.
Would there have to be a line item established then specifically for that, or do you already have one? Question created.
Because you don't have a part-time line item, do you?
Well, not for that circumstance. But could that, if you transferred in and paid out of that, that's not a retirement plan.
That's right.
We may have to create a line item and just transfer money into it.
Yeah. If you can identify where it would be transferred from, what the line item would be, and get it on the agenda for workshop, is that okay with everybody?
What's your time line to need to know that this is going to happen? I was hoping today, and frankly, vacancy, you know, exists currently, and I have one staff member that's on, I need currently, so.
Tell me a suggestion.
But sooner rather.
Suggestion, if we take a break, can you, can you find the answers and then come back to us if you need that answer today when we come back from the break? We should be able to help you with your, creating the line item, and then we can look at your budget.
As far as the FICA...
That would...
Yeah.
Yeah, the FICA would come out of the commissioner's budget, so you wouldn't need to take care of that here.
Okay.
Right, Jeff?
Yes.
We can approve, he's got the... We can approve that and, but add the line item and the...
The next, do the transfer.
See where it's coming from, we can add the numbers this afternoon.
Okay, so the, I think the appropriate motion would be to allow up to very many weeks, and the amount for this person with the sheriff coming back in cooperation with the auditor's office, creating a line item and what the transfer of funds would be. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Submove.
Say it.
For how many weeks?
You say you got another one coming off, or another one getting ready to go on? I'd say eight weeks.
Okay. Motion's for eight weeks, which would be at the $4,220.8 with the line item and the transfer to come at, at workshop or after our break, if you don't want.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I've said it's an eight-week shot.
All right. Jeff?
Kathy?
Aye, Kathy. Gary?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Excellent, okay.
The second item that I have is a request for utilizing money... The second item that I have is a request for utilizing money from my commissary account to help pay for criminal background checks that I cannot do through my office for staff members, board members, and volunteers at the Wayne County Boys and Girls Club. We all know that the Boys and Girls Club of Wayne County does a fantastic job for our community in helping our youth. They provide a fantastic service that, at six different locations here in Wayne County. Four of them are in Richmond, two of them are in western Wayne County, Cambridge City, and Hagerstown respectively. And of those six facilities, they service a tremendous amount, hundreds of children in our community. I feel it's a very good investment in crime prevention to be able to do these background investigations or background checks, if you will, on the staff members and volunteers, as well as the board. They do approximately 175 of these background checks are needed. And while I would not be funding the entire amount, my request would be to partially fund that in an amount of $2,000, and that would all come from my commissary.
Okay. Everybody, so the appropriate would be allowing another item to be added to your commissary fund for appropriate spending? Is that the?
Yeah, it's, it's actually an individual, one-time approval and not, not part of the.
A one-time addition to the list?
Yes.
That we previously have approved?
That's right. I'll be coming back to council later this fall for amendment on, on that list. It needs to be updated.
Okay, but this would be just for this one right now?
Correct.
I'll make the motion. It's not taxpayer money. It's a good use of the money for the commissary fund.
I'll second that.
Move the motion to second. Jeff?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Max?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, on to the budget.
And Debbie, if you can, no offense, Mary, but if you could make that full-size budget?
If we can, we can.
Oh, you can?
As long as we talk around, we can. According to IT and if we do anything, IT has to do that because I don't know how to use Zoom still. But I talked.
Okay, if you just hit the little box next to the left of the X, it won't do anything?
It's not.
Not anything positive?
No. I haven't even gone into the desktop and they're looking at 150%. You know, I need, they need.
Okay. We'll just, we'll go a little, a little slower here. Which budget do you want to start on? Enforcement or jail?
Jail, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can go to.
I've got the other one.
Let's do enforcement, since.
Okay.
She's already got it up here.
It's actually, it's changed, it's changed. First, I'll go on your thing to line 30600, 3600, which are bulk group vests, your ballistic vests. Requesting an increase from $6,000 to $18,000 through our inventory system. We understand that we have at least 16 ballistic vests that will be expiring in 2025, and they'll have to be replaced. And those are typically $1,000 per given, give or take, if you need.
Okay.
Mr. Gilliam, I'm not sure what your pleasure is, if you want me to go line by line and just make questions or just burn through.
Probably if we, this is the 2,000?
We're in the 3,000s.
Yeah. But let's go up to the 2,000. Actually, are there any changes in the 1,000s?
No.
Okay. Let's start with the 2,000s. And any, any increases that are significant and will?
No increases in the 2,000s.
No, okay. All right, let's go on down to the 3,000s then, and we talked about the first one.
Yep. The next one is legal fees, 33120. And for some time, it's been $5,000, and I'm asking for a $1,000 increase to $6,000. My attorney fees have increased.
Okay.
The next line is 33670, equipment maintenance and service contracts. Well, I've requested this line be increased from $70,000 to $75,000. A $5,000 increase, and this is to equip five new vehicles at $15,000 each. Have to be coming in 2025.
Are you adding five vehicles or updating five?
I'm sorry.
Are you adding five vehicles to the fleet or just updating five?
Requesting five vehicles to fleet.
Five additional vehicles in the fleet?
Five total for next year.
Five additional or just purchasing five or getting rid of five?
Yes, purchasing five and getting rid of five.
Okay.
That's what are typical. But to outfit and equip those vehicles at $15,000 each. The next line item, if there's no other questions on that one, is 33830, 33830, employment processing. We've had a 33% increase of employment processing since June. Request that that be increased from $5,000 to $7,000 to help offset some of that cost. And the next item is 30700, the TASER line item. And last year, and I brought this to the attention of council previously, last year it was, by an error, mistaken really, no one but oversight, it was put in at $28,160, and it needed to be $38,160. We were able to transfer money to get that taken care of, and I'm requesting that line be restored
Okay.
Those are all the items that I have on the enforcement budget.
Okay. Any, any questions on the enforcement budget? If not, let's go over to the jail budget.
Save the best for last. The first one is 33110, medical testing. This is significant increase. We're asking that it be increased from $25,000 to $65,000. We have already spent over $43,000 as of the 5th of August.
Okay. Can you hang on just a second, Debbie?
So what number was that line?
Increasing from 25 to 65. Unfortunately, the inmate population that we have is, their health has, has declined over the years. As they come in, they're in poor shape, medical expenses are going up, and it's costing more and more for testing and other things. Unfortunately, as I said, we've already spent $43,000 as of the 5th of this month.
Might need to catch that, Randy. How much do you want to increase it to?
$65,000. So $40,000 increase. I'll move on to 33200, 33200, contractual professional. Be requesting increase on that from $890,000 to $908,000. Primarily, this, this increase is requested for additional software required by Kalia, our accreditation for the use of an employee management system. It's, it's a software package through Power DMS that helps us manage our evaluation system, our early intervention system, and everything from reprimands to commonions. It's a very inclusive system, and it's one that our accreditation through Kalia is pushing us into some type of a system, and they're obviously recommending one by Power DMS.
Is this new or is this replacing something?
Well, yes. It's, it's actually, it's actually new. We, we do have a system that manages all of those things. Some of that is manual, some of it's automated. This is completely automated. So it would be a benefit. It would require, I guess, less time from the administrative staff to manage this manually. But, but it is, but, but we are doing all of these, these things, but this actually takes care of it for us. Kalia is really pushing to have us, in fact, they've hinted on saying that our system is not sufficient and may not be founding appliance in the future.
Is this a one-time expenditure?
I don't have that answer. I think that it's a one-time to buy, but I do think there's a annual subscription, just like Power DMS.
Be good to know what we're obligating ourselves for down the road.
Yeah, I agree. I can, I can find out what the, what the yearly subscription would be after that. But I know that this, this would obviously take care of 2025.
And if I, if I can add on that note also, usually when you get those, then there's, depending on how many users you have, what the price is. The more users you have.
The licenses.
Yes. Which is usually the yearly, once you pay for the package, then that yearly amount depends on.
Anyway.
It's, in some cases, that's true.
I do also want to make note on this particular line item that my contract with quality correctional care expires April 30th of 2025. It does have an auto renewal feature, which would allow us to renew our contract with them for an additional year. And in the current contract, it states that the increase would be to more than 5% of the previous year. So I, I don't have a, I don't have a solid number. If we decide if we're going to renegotiate the contract, that could have an impact. But if we do not renegotiate the contract and we stay with QCC, then my recommendation would be to budget for just that contract at $880,000. Which I believe.
Did you say April 30th?
April 30th. Which I believe should be able to be maintained within the $908,000 that's requested.
Is someone talking to you?
No. It's been anywhere from two years to four years. Currently, we were in a two-year contract, and we have the auto renewal clause on that for an issue.
Do you anticipate a need for a change of scope of services?
No, actually, actually, the services that we've came up with on this last contract have been working well. In fact, we just passed with flying colors 100% our NCCHC accreditation, so.
And we still are doing dental as an additional element, except.
That's correct. And that, yeah, that's expensive. And, and part of the medical that we talked about earlier, I think, is being paid for out of dental. And I know that we're also paying out of contractual for the dental as well. If we're ready to move on to the next?
Yep.
33280, return of fugitives. Requesting the increase from $7,500 to $10,000. Although we did, and we were paying for safekeeping out of this, which we incurred quite a bit of an expense this year, we also have been actually capturing many more out-of-state fugitives. And this is directly a result of the reformation of our warrant task force. It's been very successful, and they've been, they've been very good at tracking these people down and getting them back into custody in our court system. But with that, there's an additional cost to go get them. So I'd be requesting a $2,500 addition to that line item. The next line is 33440, medical co-pay. As we discussed earlier, unfortunately, the decline in the health of the inmates that are coming into my facility has had an additional impact on our co-pay. Asking increase from $120,000 to $160,000. As of August 5th, we've already spent $96,000 of the 120 that was a lot. Next line is 33670, equipment maintenance service contract. Requesting increase from $38,000 to $46,000. As of June, we were already 20% over budget on that line, and that settled sum, we're still 8% over budget on that as of August 5th. That may continue to settle, but my projections right now will be over budget. Next line is 33830, employment processing. Again, just like with the enforcement division, we've had a significant increase in employment processing costs. Asking for an increase from $14,000 to $21,000. As of June of this year, we'd had a 50% increase in employment costs. Additionally, I would like to reintroduce some additional testing features that we had done in the past, but had cut back on because of the overall cost. I'd like to get those back, restate it. And the last line item is 33890, training and education. Again, this line item has been zero for quite some time. I've utilized commissary money out of that. Asking that be increased to $5,000. And as you know, that unfortunately, the jail has been a revolving door. It is not just for Wayne County, but across the nation. And it costs a lot of money to train the new staff. More importantly, my supervisory staff, I'm investing in them. This, this new supervisory training that I'm bringing in, in fact, this new company I'm bringing in starts Thursday. We'll be bringing them in twice a year for the next few years to make sure that our supervisory staff are trained up and in a position to lead the new staff that we're hiring on a routine basis. But this, this training is $10,000 a year alone. That's always been paid for out of commissary, and I think, as you know, commissary funds should be just used for supplemental to the budget. should be just used for supplemental to the budget and not replaced with the board. So I'm asking for money in my training. That's the last line item.
Very good. Other questions for the sheriff? If not, thanks a lot.
Thank you, and we'll get that for you after.
Okay, at this point in time, we will take a 10-minute recess. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the finance meeting. Next up on the agenda is Jeff Plaster, who has a transfer from the commissioners.
Good morning, again.
Good morning.
I actually have a couple of things I need to talk about. You should all have a sheet that looks like this, but it's a little chart there. So you'll recall that we discussed in our initial budget conversations about our insurance. And what I neglected in the 2024 budget and again in the 2025 budget was the renewal takes place on July 1. And so the new premiums begin July 1. This year in particular, the increase was significant, and there was an increase last year. So as we look at the current year, budget year 2024, we have in our auto and liability insurance line, remaining, the remaining premium is $118,822.44.
Remaining for the year.
The remainder for the balance of the year, which is going to be one quarter, because this is paid quarterly, and we've paid three quarters. So we're at a negative $3,011 in that account. We still need $121,834.01. And then the workers' comp, the remaining premium for the year, and this one is paid by Angelie, $51,860. We have available funds, the balance in that fund is $41,872.01. So we still need an additional $10,773.61. So the total remaining premium for both of those is $170,683.25. The available funds are $38,75.56. We need an additional $132,607.69. And unfortunately, this then carries on into next year, although we had a pretty good estimate, we asked for in the budget for 2025, $500,000 for auto and liability, the actual premium at the rate of the first six months. So that is $503,436. So that would be assuming that there was no increase on July 1st. I don't think we can make that assumption in the current insurance market. So that is probably going to be too low, and the same for workers' comp for next year. But to resolve the issue for this year, we need an additional $132,607.69. We do not have that in the commissioner's budget. You know, there's two potential places that could come from easily, it's your decision, but you know, it could come from your contingency funds. It could come from ARPA, although that's not been a proposal from the commissioners at this point. This data is also new, and we haven't discussed this at the commissioners' level. So we need that, the bill for the auto and liability insurance, which one is due?
Workers' comp still needs to be...
Workers' comp is due now.
Yes.
The other one will be, we'll be paying for the fourth quarter.
Well, we could recommend to you that we'd like for you to pay it from ARPA, and you guys can discuss it at your meeting today, right?
We can talk about it, sure.
We have ample funds to cover the workers' comp.
There is still...
You said it was...
I'm sorry.
It's by annuals. They'll have to get paid again.
The next payment will be short $10,773.61, and that's due now. So, sorry, but again, with this insurance market, this is unprecedented increase in my experience, although we did actually, we were better off than we were afraid we were going to be when we went out for renewal.
In light of the pressing calendar to get the ARPA money taken care of to the end of the year, I would move that we recommend to the commissioners that this deficit of $132,607.69 come from ARPA plus.
I would second that.
We have a motion on the second.
Barry's gone, so we don't have to roll call anymore.
Yeah, do we have to note that at this point, since he's not on?
Yeah, he had to leave, but we...
I think it would be well to note that so that there's no question.
And that we are allowed to?
Just vote.
Okay. All those in favor, do we need the commissioners to say yes as well?
Well, my motion was recommended then.
We would have to discuss it.
It's our recommendation.
It would be a recommendation to us, and we'll take it up in our meeting after.
Is it for the $132,679? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We don't have to. Barry left.
Okay, aye.
Aye for both of us. Okay.
All right, well, if we approve that, we can go ahead and pay it. If we don't, we'll see workshop, I guess.
Yeah, it's in your court.
Okay, thank you. The second issue is an issue with legal fees through our insurance company, but this is the defense of a couple of lawsuits. The total is $20,081.50. We would propose that we could transfer that from, oh, was it Bobby? It was our workers' comp claims, right?
Yes, $20,081.50 from 13730, workers' comp to 33200.
So remember, we have two lines associated with workers' comp, one to pay for the insurance premium, and then one to actually pay claims, which we pay up to a certain level, and then the insurance takes over the balance. So it looks like we have enough in that claims line to be able to transfer over to our contractual line, which we did request an increase in our contractual line for next year in the amount of $20,081.50.
I move for the transfer.
We have a transfer request. Beth moves for approval.
I'll second.
Kathy seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And then we need to, for your 2025 budget, need to take into account, and we can talk about this if we get back to the budget. We'll talk about it again. We also, from the Health Department, they have a grant that has ended, and they received all of their reimbursements, and they would like to do a transfer to help pay for the recalibration of our XRF lead testing inspection device. It runs about $15,000. That should zero out that grant, and they can close that out. So our request specifically is in Fund 9172 to add account line 33670, maintenance and equipment, to first of all, request that line in that grant fund.
I have a question. They told us they do this about every two years, and I think two years ago we did this, and it was $7,500. So now it's twice that? They're saying it's 15,000 now?
I'm sorry, Beth, I didn't hear what you said.
They're saying it's 15,000. We did this two years ago, and they told us it happens about every two years, and that it's like $7,500.
It depends on how often they use the machine, but they had money left, so they wanted to use whatever's left. But they also are moving, they create the line and move some money in there, but they also have funds that need to go into two other lines, and I don't remember what those are. But they have the money for all of that, it's just, and the grant ended June 30th, so they need to go ahead and do all that to create it and get it done, and then Debbie can close the books in loud for that.
What are the other two things they want to...
Actually, they would be transferring from line in Fund 9172, transferring from account 22210, and the lead grant, gas, fuel, and lubricants, $8,823.79, transferring it to equipment maintenance of $8,823.79. Yeah, I'm not sure where the 15,000, I'm not sure where the 15,000 come. That's from an email, but from the actual request to transfer is $8,823.79.
Yeah, I would go with the transfer because they've looked at the funds and verified all that. I'm not sure about that email.
Okay. So the first item would be to create in Fund 9172, which is the lead paint grant, an account number 33670, maintenance and equipment.
So I will make the motion to create that line item.
Second.
Motion on the second to create the line item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, the second part of the request is to do a transfer from account 22210, gas, fuel, and lubricants to equipment maintenance, 33670, in the amount of $8,823.79.
I will also make the motion to make that transfer.
Second.
Motion on the second to approve the transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And this also will need a commissioner's signature. Okay, and we've proved that $20,000. Oh, no, we didn't. We made a recommendation.
Sure.
I'll have to put that back up there. Next...
If they don't sign it, then it's not good.
Every year, we can make non-binding recommendations to the budget of other governmental units in Wayne County. Each unit sets their own budget. The state reviews, and then council also can review and make any non-binding recommendations back to them. But it is up to the designating body to decide their budget and levy in accordance with the state. These have been received in Gateway, and similar to past years, I would make the motion that we have reviewed that, and council will make no non-binding recommendations to those units, and let the Department of Local Government Finance deal with those budgets. I will make that motion, and I need a second.
Second.
Second by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six to nothing. All right. Now, for the next time, we have allotted, I would like to go back and review some of the budgets that we heard from previously, and I think that...
Tony?
Please, yes.
Were we going to do the sheriff's thing before you get into that?
Oh, okay. Sure. Sheriff, if you want to come back, before we recessed, we were talking about this, and I know you talked with Kim now as far as the line item is concerned, and where you might be able to transfer, so if you could give us those two requests.
So the request would be to, I think, first, create line item 1,000, and then 13510, 0005, would be, the account name would be temporary employee.
And this would be in the enforcement?
Correct.
Budget?
Correct. And then...
Hang on, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we create that line item. 13510, right?
13510.
Second.
We have a motion on the second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead with the transfer.
The second request would be to transfer $4,220.08 from line item 11910, the unused salary in that line item. That's also an enforcement mission.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Beth.
I'll second that.
Max, beat you on that one.
Okay.
Motion on the second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring that up to the proceeding.
Sure, and then we'll be doing a salary ordinance and a workshop.
Well, we can do it now.
Okay. We can.
I have the number.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now, Tony? Kim has the number, and then we have it all done.
Yeah. Sure, just a second.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate it.
Okay, Cam.
Okay, this will be a salary ordinance amendment number 2024-11, and that would, the request is... And that would, the request is to amend the salary ordinance one three five one zero, part-time temporary employee and that salary range would be eighteen nineteen to nineteen nineteen. And that's in there because the state order of accounts requirement have a range, so, but it will pay at eighteen nineteen.
I will make the motion.
Oh, and I'm sorry, effect, we need an effective date, sorry.
If that's possible.
Yeah.
I will make the motion that we make that salary ordinance change.
Thank you today, second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think when we left off last time, we had kind of concluded with probation and I- Yep, okay. So if you can sew. And then, and then there were five. Did everybody get the recommendation of twenty twenty-five minimum salary schedule for probation officers after? After? The meeting?
Yeah, it's a basic announcement.
The new reset.
Which I'm not sure, I'm not sure we need to have discussion on that today, but I just want to make sure that everyone had, had received, or actually Max, if you want to talk about it.
At some point.
Okay, well let's, let's put that off for the time being then. And so, next up would be the prosecutor. Debbie, if you want to break.
You got it.
Okay, you got it? And anything here that allow you to time to get that up? Don't believe there were many of any changes. Twenty twenty-five. It's actually a decrease.
I made it a hundred and fifty percent so you guys could see it before. Do you want me to go ahead and put it back down so you can have the other, you know, the columns?
If we can have the twenty twenty-four column in there, that would be helpful. I don't see any changes. I, I didn't think there were.
Tony, there's one change we will have to make at some point in time. The, it's line number one zero nine two nine, Victims Assistance Coordinator. That person has been out on sick leave, so I think she's returned part-time, but she's going to get with Mike because that, that's a grant and she's got a, different years we get different amounts from that grant. And I didn't catch it last time, but it's zero, but it'll need to change.
Okay, let's wait till we get this on the screen.
The bad on it's the increase.
No, that's what I did. I went and moved it to see what was bothering that and it's not. Yeah, right there and I go, Dad, could you light it? And it's not showing up.
Okay, the one that Debbie brought up, is that something that we can do at this point? To make the, what line item?
It's one zero nine two nine, Victims Assistant Coordinator.
This is in the prosecutor?
Yes, in their budget and it's zero for requested for this year. They're to get me that figure when that employee's back and they can get the records in. Because it varies from one year to the next, so you can't just automatically, because part of it comes out of here and part of it comes out of the grant.
Okay, so we do not have a number to change to?
Correct, I'm just saying we will need to put something in there, hopefully by workshop.
Okay.
Should we just put the twenty-four number in there just to have a placeholder for honey?
Do you have an idea of the amount that would be?
You can if you want to just put last year's.
Just to have.
I want to say it decreases, but don't quote me on that because I've slept since then, so I don't remember. But if you want to put that as a placeholder, that, that would be fine.
I show no appropriation on the twenty twenty-four.
On the adopted, but the adjusted in there.
It's thirty-three two twenty-three, so something changed last year.
Changed this year. She didn't, I mean, the twenty twenty-four.
Is that one that was funded entirely?
That was one that was in the whole, like, big time for like several years.
Probably in the grant.
So move it over to general fund.
So the general fund needs to fund the difference between what the grant gives us and the person's salary, but it changes every year with the grant.
So that's thirty-three two twenty-three.
That would have been an adjustment that we made after the budget was adopted. So I would put that figure-
Just put that back in there for, as a placeholder.
Are you saying the thirty-three two twenty-three?
Yeah, and let's let's see if the-
I've got it back on my screen. I lost that.
Okay.
She's calling Caitlin.
Okay. So Max, do you want to tell the line item?
Line item ten one oh nine two nine, has a zero on requested budget. We're going to put in the number from line, from twenty-four, which is thirty-three two twenty-
Hang on, let her get there.
Okay, I'm in prosecutor, which line item?
One oh nine two nine.
One oh nine, okay.
And put in the twenty-five requested, thirty-three two twenty-three.
Thirty-three two twenty-three, so you want me to add that in the request and not just the twenty-five adopted? The adopted's where I'm making the changes.
That was, that all happened after the twenty-four budget was approved.
Three three two two three. I've got that.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else in that one, I think we're going to the clerk election board. It must be to the clerk's budget first and then the election after that.
Okay, I'm there. What line item?
I'm going to share your computer until I get that up.
So, do you know which one that was?
No, no, no. We just need to see if we see any changes or we need to-
So the salary should be the same.
Total's the same? Okay, any comments or questions on that?
Oh, that one, her, the adopted's ten five oh six and it says so far she's spent eleven one twenty-six this year.
Which line? You talk to her.
Right about that.
One three six four oh.
Good question.
Like six hundred and twenty dollars over. It should show up in the red and she didn't even say anything to us about that.
You didn't know what caused that.
Well, twenty twenty-four, she'll have to come enforce for a transfer.
And this morning, out of that empty deputy nine line. That's what she transferred from this morning.
If you look back at twenty twenty-three, she had ten thousand five oh six. She did the same thing for twenty-four and same thing for twenty-five. I think she didn't-
She overspends that overtime big time.
It was the one employee, we talked about the health insurance. And the intent was that was to be paid out of the general fund thing.
Oh, yeah, that's deputy nine, but the overtime, we are looking back to her history, she overspends that quite a bit every year. And I don't know why it stays the same and then she spends more than that.
She spent seventeen thousand.
Yes.
Which was an election year.
Yeah.
And this year's an election year. Twenty-one, she'll spend forty.
Next year's no elections.
But she still spent forty.
Yeah.
I would say she could come with a transfer for twenty twenty-four, but next year's not an election year and-
Even on the non-election year, she's spent. Yeah, she overspend.
She spent forty-one seventy-six in twenty-four.
Yeah, I guess she did.
In a non-election year, so we should be fine there.
Twenty-three was not. I wish she spent more in twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-two was the worst.
Yeah, because that wasn't, twenty-three wasn't, and it's still high above.
Twenty-three was a city election, but-
This will be changed next year too. It will be a different person controlling his budgets, so we'll have to watch the overtime.
Okay, so there aren't any changes that we need to make there. Let's go to the election board.
Oh, she has some changes in the three thousand, just a little bit. No, I guess not.
And here we need to, with next year not being an election year, has she given us the, as I recall, she was going to go through and give us the figures that she would need considering it's a non-election board. Have we recorded those?
Here's what is in there right now, like the thousand.
I was thinking that's what this is because you see she's got some zeros, so I think-
Because it's a non-
But she also reminded us the following year that, you know, that would change for us.
We just go for her budget one time, money. She's now from seventy-one thousand to thirty-one thousand.
Right. So it has been reduced.
It has been reduced.
From one sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five thousand to forty-one five total.
So the question is, is all of those, that's still there, appropriate for a non-election year?
Correct.
The contractual professional is in half. That's by far the biggest. That's well over half of the total.
I don't know much. That's probably.
Back in twenty-one. She's got one two thirty-nine of the contractual. That's only six hundred and fifty, forty dollars.
Would that be an amount that we have to pay for the voting machines that-
Yeah, probably.
Re, you know, regardless of whether we have an election or not, we have to-
But this is changed, it's still dramatic.
Are you talking about the contractual professional line?
Yeah, even on an election year, she did spend the thousand.
Yeah, line item thirty-three two hundred. Perhaps we could move that to fifteen.
And, and ask her about it? Make sure there's not something we didn't think about? Go ahead and change it to fifteen?
Yes, line item thirty-three two hundred, you've got it back up there.
Want to put that at fifteen?
Yes.
We're changing that to fifteen. Yeah, I have fifteen. Oh, here's it.
Would you change it to, Debbie?
Fifteen. There. Yours is off.
I guess the highlight couldn't show you.
Any other questions on this budget? Next up is the coroner.
We need to talk to him after he gets appointed by the caucus.
Yeah, the coroner has resigned officially.
Officially.
I have not received the official notice from the court yet, so thirty days after I'll receive that to hold the caucus. Get it in after.
And the person interested-
So we're without a, we're without a coroner at this point?
Friday, I think, February.
Yeah.
Effective Friday?
Yeah, and the person interested is the person who's coroner elect for the next year. So we could probably consult with him.
Yeah, I think we probably need to-
I think we need to have him come in.
He's, he's made some considerable changes in requests, so he needs to come in and justify.
He needs to justify that.
Yeah, he, he needs to be appointed first.
Yes.
Before we have him in here and-
It'll be with, hopefully within the next thirty days, plus to that. So it'll be-
Let's, let's just skip this
Yeah.
budget for the time being and then go to the Wayne County Assessor budget.
Hey Tony, can I ask a quick question back on that? And I think we talked about this last time. There's a negative in other equipment, but was that a, something was put in the wrong fund, Debbie? Does that ring a bell?
It was paid and the check got sent back and then-
Thirty-three six hundred was the, yes.
And then, I thought that got fixed. Like a month ago.
Well, I just, I just see it still on there, that's like, okay.
Give her a second to go back.
Right.
The question is on the coroner's budget.
Oh, you're back on the corner.
I'm sorry.
Okay. What about it?
Line thirty-three six hundred. There was a question and we, I thought that was a mistake, an accounting error or something was posted wrong. Something happened, I don't remember what.
I thought Amy-
Because that still shows negative for twenty-four, but-
I think Amy helped get it fixed not too long ago.
There was nothing budgeted for twenty-four?
I don't recall. They paid for, for some equipment and then the check got sent back for some reason and then it got, I don't know.
So what I'm saying is maybe that negative just needs to be a zero or whatever.
It does need to go away. I can't just do that.
No, I know.
In the system.
I'm just saying if your check into it, then we'll have it for the next time.
And he, Kevin explained it and I think he talked with Amy and she, Amy took care of it. Yes, I don't recall that one. I'll make a note of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So which one? We are going to the Wayne County Assessor. And then we'll do the Township Assessor after that. Okay, we've got the county assessor up here. What's, what's the?
The need that extra thousand.
Yeah.
We just need to budget that, I guess.
And.
But she received her level two just a few months ago and we're giving it to her now.
Yeah, can you go up to the deputy? Chief Deputy. And we need to, in the twenty-five.
Look at the sixty-three. Uh-huh. Sixty-three six seventy.
So that includes the, the thousand dollar level one stipend now. So now we can go down to the two thousands. And those are.
No change.
No change. And then all of the three thousands.
No change.
No change, okay. Okay, we are at the bottom of the three thousands. So there's no changes there. Do you want to go to the Wayne Township budget?
Can I ask you a quick question before you jump to that one just on? And I just don't remember that line thirty-three two hundred contractual professional, is that all for that Lexus or Nexus or whatever they are?
The largest portion is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So we are at Township and looking at that, I don't see nothing changed in the thousands, nothing changed in the two thousand. And we had a little bit of changes in the three thousands. There's about a total of two percent.
There we go, sorry.
Three thousands. Increased.
No, there isn't. There isn't a difference, is there? Is there a difference in the?
There's a difference in the total about.
Well, the sixteen hundred. Training and education line thirty-three eight ninety went from zero to sixteen hundred.
And so did go to three two thirty, went to twenty-one hundred.
Went from zero to twenty-one, so you got two lines that were not funded in twenty-four.
Okay.
Sixteen hundred for training.
And was that because he thought he could use, and it can only be used by the, the office holder and the chief deputy? So there's small increase there, so I don't think there's anything. I'm okay with it as long as everyone else is.
Yes.
Surveyor would be the next budget. Give time for everybody to, to get to that budget. And it looks like no change in the thousand, no change in the two thousand.
Increase in the thirty.
Just a five hundred, looks like five hundred dollar increase in training and education.
Line thirty-three.
Okay. There's not anything there. In the treasurer's office, I believe there's no, no change there. And or correct, there's no changes in, in that. Let's take a look at the reporter, reporter's office.
There is change in the thousands.
Five, which she now?
Ten two oh two. Line ten one hundred.
However, may not be a paid the right amount.
Raise elected official and chief deputy to reflect the amounts being paid to the other. That should have been changed.
That should have been changed last year.
That should have been changed back to last year, right?
Uh-huh.
Is that one you missed getting changed back?
I did whatever the salary order and sure, I don't know why it's not there, but I agree elected officials are eighty-three and deputies are sixty-two currently. I'm sorry, I can't hear what.
No, she's requested, the recorder is not paying the same as the treasurer or others.
Oh.
And so she's requested to up that because of that, so it's the same here.
Because other people in the building make that much money? They're not, so they're not paid at the same rate as the.
No.
Okay.
The orders always been paid.
Okay.
Recorder wasn't paid last year.
So those amounts need to be the same as the twenty twenty-four then? She, she raised up the other amounts on here.
Right, her request is that they be paid the same as the.
Yeah, and that's, but she put the amounts in there, so we need to put those back to twenty twenty-four amounts before we do a raise. She, let me put that back to seventy-five two oh seven.
Favorite question is, sir, that's several times.
Yeah, every year.
It's just not what we did, it's not what we did, so.
Okay, and then Max, do you want to keep such your personnel, keep that as a special request, but go ahead and move it back now?
Uh, we can do that.
Should I move both back to the twenty-four next?
Yes, yes. So that means that one oh one zero zero should be in there. At seventy-five two oh seven.
Change that. I'll click over here so I can keep. That's it, twenty-four dollars.
Okay, which ought to be this?
Twenty, I put the wrong one there, yeah.
Yeah, so those first two need to be changed. Back to twenty-four.
And then ten.
Requested also or just the adopted?
No, the adopted from twenty-four, I was probably right.
Yeah, the, the requested for twenty-five needs to be the same. For twenty-five, should I change it all three columns then, or just the adopted, which is what we're working on? They're, they're requested.
Yeah, so ten one hundred should be seventy-five thousand two oh seven. And ten two oh two should be fifty-six thousand four oh five.
But Debbie's question for this is which column do you want her to change it on there?
I did it on the adopted, which is where I'm changing now, but because of this, do you want me to go back? I mean, she requested eighty-three. I should just leave the eighty-three and the requested. And only change the adopted.
Not because we haven't let anybody raise their salary.
So go ahead and put it back. Okay.
That's why we're saying put it back.
When we give.
When we get the raise then it'll.
Yeah, but I think what Debbie was saying is to leave the original, so we know what she put originally and then we're.
But we tell everybody not, they're not supposed to change any employee amounts.
I did.
Okay.
Okay, I've changed all three columns.
Ask her about anywhere.
I do have a quick question on that and I don't know if we have an answer. Have we ever checked, because this has come up several times with the recorder, have we checked just to see what do other counties, do they pay their recorder? Are they pretty much the same as the auditor, the treasurer and anybody know? I'm just curious.
There's been a difference since I've been here for eighteen years and why I don't know. I can't tell you why, but they've, that salary for the recorder has never matched.
At one time, I think I just looked at.
But I don't know why.
Does Irwin have, do they even deal with elected official salaries or?
They can.
I mean, they don't, but we don't ask that, right?
Correct, okay. Because we've been just moving in love with department heads, so.
Do we have department heads that make more than this recorder?
The department heads make the, the eighty-three five sixty-three. That's department heads.
Okay, so did you all catch that?
We have department heads that make more than the recorder, just does that information.
And I don't know if it's because of our hours, or if it's not forty.
Oh, they don't work forty hours.
They do not work forty hours.
It's thirty-five and a half or thirty-seven and a half.
More than the elected officials.
Yeah.
That's not.
That's probably the reason.
Yeah, that's the reason.
No, except when it's hours.
Well, the treasurer's office works the same amount of hours. The auditors went up because their people wanted to raise a few years back and, and they did that and they went to forty. I'm not sure about who else there would be, but.
So the treasurer's office doesn't work forty hours either?
No.
Wow.
They've tried to get them to go to that several times and then last year, I think we talked about it, but then we didn't want to pay the extra, I don't know, the extra money to the employees, so they left it. So we left it.
We can leave it like it. Yeah, like we revised it and then come back.
So do we want Kim to check out the counties, if there is a?
Yeah, we probably don't even need them, perhaps. I mean, that would be pretty, would that be pretty easy to, I don't want to.
Why did you?
Make an assumption, but would it be pretty easy to check what?
I didn't know.
You know, similar counties, do they pay? Do they have a difference in pay? And how many hours between those offices and is there a difference if they've worked different hours, different amount of hours?
And I think in fairness, she asked for it, so if we at least do that, then we've done our due diligence. Whether we keep it what it has been or we raise it.
Okay, and two thousands, there are no changes. Three thousands, there are some changes, but it's overall about six hundred and eighty, uh, four dollars less than twenty twenty-four. I don't think there's probably anything there that we need to look at unless.
Agreed.
Okay, um, let's go to G I S.
That's in the. It's not.
It's not in this spreadsheet, is it? It's eleven fifty.
Wait here while everybody. Um, I want to put okay on that.
I don't know how to get there. That's not me, that's back there. Please.
They say okay.
I can't.
You can't do it?
No, I think he's, it's back there. I never had this, yeah.
There's no change in the thousands.
Oh, you have, okay. And you know how?
But there is a.
What'd you do? I can be okay.
Decreased.
Thank you.
They're all new.
Technical stuff.
Okay. The thirty-three one forty G I S maintenance decreased from one twenty to seventy. It was increased by, in the twenty-four budget.
For the flyover.
For the check. So he's putting it back to probably. Yeah, twenty-three, it was sixty-seven nine thirty-nine, so seventy thousand's probably about right there. And the.
You have one, one other right there at the top.
Oh, I missed. Four bucks.
What was the equipment maintenance service, the thirty-three six seventy? Do you remember what that was? Five thousand four, it was nothing last year.
And the adopted budget was five thousand last year.
Is there any way?
Yeah, twenty-three, it was zero.
It's been five thousand every year, but they've never spent it.
Yeah. Keep in mind that we fund this one twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent is the city, twenty-five percent is the E D C and twenty-five percent is the sewer. Richmond Sanitary, I should say. Okay, I, I don't really see anything there.
The computer equipment on four thousand. Four thousand.
Same deal, one year they spent seventy-five, it probably just depends on the outcome of that last year.
Nothing in twenty-two, nothing in twenty-one. We might want to talk to him about that and see what his expectation is.
Like I said, it's, it's really more twenty-five percent of it, so. Um, if the other entities have.
Do the other entities pay or was actually spin? What's budgeted?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I think it's, it's what's budgeted and then it, that fund, that's a separate fund.
Where's that go if they don't spend it then?
It's in its own fund.
So what's the balance of that fund?
Mm-hmm.
I missed the question.
What's the, the G I S fund? Like what, do we know what the balance in that fund is?
Not off the top of my head. You're talking eleven fifty?
Yes. But it, it would be hard for us to say when they, if it's proportionally spent throughout the.
I can tell you a quote of this. That they continually have, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in there, but it's not spent every year. But we're all funded and they do. Cash balance is three hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-nine one oh six. That's ridiculous. Now, we're talking cash, we're not talking budget, but this, this is the cash.
Yeah.
But that's kind of crazy.
Well, their total budget request is only two thirty-nine.
Two thirty-nine.
Or two, well, two forty. So then one way, somehow we're getting more money than they're.
I don't know why.
Which at some point the four entities can agree to lower some of these budgeted line items because they have the extra money.
Yeah.
Should be, yeah.
And I think they do it on a you know, they'll look at it and say, we've got this pot. They reduce it slightly so that the next year it's not a big kickoff.
I don't want to enjoy it.
That they need and one of the four entities has trouble coming up with the money. If that makes sense to you.
I think they kept that same rate, so when they got a flyover, which they do every four years, I think. But they don't have to, they have a big increase there, so I, I wouldn't worry too much about.
I see what you're saying here, you know. Like it, it would kind of make sense the next time they have a flyover not to increase the line item because they've got a cash balance in it.
So when that comes about, we need to see what their cash balance is at the time.
Yeah, and just have a research or whatever. Yeah, and just have to use reserves or whatever.
Use their balance instead.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we slipped over on that last year.
We did.
Okay. Next up would be the IT budget.
I have technical issue again, but I went from the budget stuff over into finance to get your thing. I now have lost, I can't, so she's called Kayla. I don't know why they won't come up.
Okay.
Which is what happened before and I totally redone, then I lost the machine.
But you could see it on your screen.
No, I can't.
I can't get it back.
You can see it on your screen.
Oh, wait a minute. I tried that. I'm sorry, okay, what do you mean?
Uh, we're going to the IT budget.
Okay, so you know, when he ended his presentation, he had these two suggestions if we had money. We talked about the one piece of software that would make a definite impact on security. He was going to go to the commissioners and adding that. I did not hear if that's been done or not, so it needs to be adjusted.
Here, here come.
Nope, I got it up there.
Okay, no, no, no.
Do you want to ask Jeff?
Yeah. You want to? And I think the commissioners to implement that now was going to pay for that out of their budget, but we probably won't take care of this.
Can I actually not come on about software for the health department, are you?
No, IT.
I can't really hear what you're saying.
Sorry.
IT.
When Craig left, at the end of his presentation, he had these two items.
Oh, yes, okay, gotcha.
You know, I pushed implementing the one and I don't, I assume that they did, but I don't know.
Step up to the hot seat, please.
So did Craig come to you about, which we had talked about, the adding that one software for to improve our security business?
In IT.
In IT.
Yeah, I remember that conversation with you guys, but I don't.
You indicated that if it was done, you probably could do it out of your budget for the remainder of this year, but we need to know if that's implemented so at the end of twenty-five.
We'll figure it out, yeah. I think we can do it for this year.
I think it was fifteen thousand. Well, I don't know, maybe we purchase it this year, then it might not be as much next year.
I know I have those numbers in my head, I'm sorry. I can follow up with Craig if you want.
Well, if we need to adjust the twenty-five budget, we need to get that.
Okay. You're going to be working on it until twelve. Let me get with Craig and see if I can find out.
Thanks.
Okay. No changes in the thousand or two thousand. We've got some changes in the three thousands. And most, all of it is in cybersecurity. And also communication. And cloud security. I mean, there's some substantial increases here.
So he had.
It's right there at the top.
He had two things, what was the other one? Is it in here, do we know? I can't remember what else he said besides that.
What were you asking then?
Twenty thousand. What was it, two thirty?
Cyber. One was a password something you could live with or not, but the other one was that he had the security, it's like fourteen thousand or something. But as I recall, when he gave his budget, he explained all of these big jumps and they all made sense to me at the time. I'm like, okay, that makes sense.
Here's all Kirk's explanations for what everything, for what his increases were. That there'll be four things, one difference.
See anything on there about that we need to?
I just. I mean, his overall cybersecurity is only ten thousand dollar increase. His whole budget is thirty-one thousand increase. The log server is what he needed, that was important, right here, and the password manager is seventy-seven, eighty-five. Those are his wish lists.
But the log receiver was.
And the log, yeah.
That he wanted to have it.
Needed to have it sooner.
I don't, he put those, I don't think either one of those are in his budget though, because he has them down there as a wish list, so.
I agree, I think that's what he says. He'd like to tell us about it, but they weren't in here.
So the fourteen thousand, is that a one-time thing in that?
Well, that's what I asked you.
I don't think it is.
We thought, well, it's when he started explaining it, and then I think we realized it's not a one-time thing, it's a every year. You want to come back to that since you're going to ask Kim about that stuff?
Bridge and highway, there's probably nothing there to discuss.
Probably not.
Which takes us.
Well, we know the highway's going to be changed when he gets to four.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Brandon, you're on a great topic.
Public health.
That one, I would say, because they've had a lot of personnel changes and stuff, I wouldn't do anything with that for the moment. See if they can get the director hired and get on that and then maybe save that one to come back to at some point in time, but I would just leave it as is for the moment.
Okay.
Well, the only thing is, and I'm not looking at it, I don't remember, do we have the director back in there?
I can't.
I don't remember.
I don't, we didn't take it, we didn't make changes to that stuff.
So we probably need to add that one.
No, we never took that one.
We just.
Oh, so it's still in there?
I think it's still in there.
We just transferred.
Okay, okay, I didn't, I don't have it up yet, so.
Are there numbers about that?
Yeah, those are the ten thousands.
Okay, we're looking for the director.
Oh.
The director, zero.
Um, is it really?
Yeah.
It's zero for forty-four. Is that because all of it went over to health first?
No, I think it's because they were going to have those two people.
No, but it doesn't show anything for twenty-three, twenty-two.
Yeah, there's some. It's not showing anything though, back to. Dad's not showing anything.
It did up here.
Which one, are you looking at eleven sixty-one or eleven fifty-nine?
I'm in eleven fifty-nine.
That's what I am, too, I assume.
Okay.
There's not, it's not in the sixty-one either.
I thought they were moving all the other stuff to health first.
It's not over there. Not the director?
No, no, the director's there.
There's a, but there's no, there's no history or anything, like, it's like they've never had a director.
Which isn't right.
That's not right.
So if we plug that in, I don't remember, Kim, do you remember what the salary? Department head salary, what is that, eighty-three, five sixty-two?
So it's the same as the other.
So then we need to add that in for.
We don't have any history there for that.
Twenty-five, right?
Something's, that makes sense here.
There's several things gone there. That whole top tier is gone.
Oh, wait a minute.
On our Excel sheets or are you looking at?
Line ten, three fifty-five.
Excel sheets.
Okay.
Look at line, it's here. Line ten, three, five, five.
I don't even have that.
It's zero, but at twenty-four, it was eighty-three, five sixty-three, which would have been the department head amount. And that's requested as zero for twenty-five because Jetmore's plan was to not have that.
Right, and use the two.
Yeah, so we need to add, at this point, I would think, eighty-three, five sixty-three.
Correct.
Five sixty-three or five sixty-two?
This says adopted in twenty-four was eighty-three, five sixty-three.
That was a line item.
Oh.
No, that's right.
Ten, three, five, five, one oh three, five, five, so line.
I don't even have that number.
What, what, what department are you looking at? What front number is that?
Ten, excuse me, eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, I don't see ten, three, five.
Oh, it's way down.
Yeah.
I see ten, three fifty, says director.
No, all that stuff from the beginning is down at the bottom.
It's way down there. It's on line, on your spreadsheet, it's line forty-five.
Oh, well, no wonder.
It's all out of order.
Yes, I don't know why.
Right there. Okay, so you need to put some money in yet?
Eighty, yeah, you need to put that to the eighty-three thousand figure.
Five sixty-two.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
And actually, we need to take, weld on the spreadsheet executive, because it's not going to be that, it's just director. Was that right, Kim?
Yeah, they're going to have to give us a better idea of what they got, what they're planning on having, I guess.
And then.
For all those employees.
They're going to come with a different number for the stipend for the health officer. I don't know where that's at.
They are.
Saw that a little bit ago.
I think I got them. I don't see it.
I don't either.
It would be in the three thousands, I think, as a contractual.
Oh, yeah, you're probably right.
It's contractual. There's a contractual protection online, it's twenty-five thousand, it's like around seventy on your spreadsheet. Where are we at?
But there's no money requested.
No, there's not.
Thank you.
There's nothing requested down there for any of that stuff down there, twenty-five. Their budget's not finished.
So the health department needs to get a realistic budget here.
Yeah, let's, let's, at this point.
They're two thousand, three thousand.
Because I think there's enough questions that maybe they need to, they need to come back, but let's.
Your writer's going to come back soon with.
We need to talk to Dan.
Didn't Dan Burke also say that he was meeting with the state health department on this later this week? So I assume he's working on this.
Okay, we'll start with this one the next session, but Jeff, did you find out any?
Yes. So it's a, it's a contractual service agreement, fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Per year.
Per year, so we can, we can pay for it this year, probably consider paying for it out of ARPA. But going forward, there would be, there would be fourteen thousand a year as an annual.
So we need to add one in here, or would it be?
It would be contractual, just add fourteen thousand to this contractual.
So we're going to the IT budget.
He felt strongly that it would be in our best interest to do this from a security perspective.
I think we're all in total agreement on that.
And then the password manager thing, because she gave us his, those were his two things on his wish list? That's. Does that have any things?
So the contractuals.
It was a wish.
Contractual software is at the line, you want to put that in?
What's the number?
Thirty-three, seven fifty.
It's not actually software, it's a, it's a cloud storage thing, so.
There's a cloud account.
Yeah, there is.
Fifty-five.
It went up, it went up twenty thousand from last, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five request.
It's for this stuff right here, though.
Not to include this in the top one.
There's the things, why he raised that cloud the first.
So are we going to.
So we would need to add fourteen thousand to the cloud number.
Yeah, we need to add.
And make that cloud number, which is account thirty-three, five, eleven. Make that sixty-nine thousand.
I'm not sure what this password manager does, but that's twenty-five, ninety-five per user.
I don't think he thought that'd have an impact on the security of the system.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Or a convenience thing or something.
Well, since we definitely have one more left.
Yeah.
He can wish for it again next year.
Or if he has, it ends up being something that's really needed, then we can talk later.
It's about seventy-eight hundred dollars a year.
Right. Okay. Okay. Anything else that you think we need to talk about this session? If not, we need to know when, when you want to meet again. We will start with public health. Which we've done everything that we covered in the morning the first day. So it would be everything in the afternoon that we need to cover. Do you want to wait until workshop, or do you want to have a special additional meeting?
I think in the past, we've come an hour, we do a workshop. If that works out, to come an hour early.
Will, will that affect the fleet committee?
It will, because we didn't meet last time, because we're meeting all day. Are we going to have a lot, or do we know agenda?
There's just a few. Well, we're not, we don't have to do that. We're just trying to share, I'm trying to think what else we said.
Might already be doing after, after.
Just stay later?
Yeah.
Stay till midnight?
No.
Nothing.
I mean, no more than a couple hours, probably. I mean, no more than a couple hours, probably.
Steve said we can move the fleet shop, the fleet meeting an hour early also to accommodate you guys.
I'm sorry?
Steve said we can move the fleet meeting an hour earlier to accommodate you guys for the budget.
Oh.
They only, there's only one. The fleet meeting up an hour, and then allow for us to have the additional. The only conflict is that we're going to try to schedule the exit conference for four o'clock. That would be me and Jeff mainly, but.
They normally buy all those.
Really? Okay, so.
That would be four. You're talking about moving the fleet committee up an hour?
Whatever you, whatever you need.
And then up, and then we would meet at five instead of six?
Right. But we're going to try to have the exit conference on the audit at four.
At four.
That's just Jeff. That's just Jeff doing that.
And the, I mean, it can be anybody who wants to come, but.
The last time, last year, we all went.
Did we all go?
Yeah, I think we were.
Can we do that at three thirty? We could make that at three o'clock?
Sure.
Instead of four? And then you guys can have your fleet meeting at four, and we'll meet at five.
Okay.
Jeff, we have things for your calendar. On the night of workshop, three o'clock for the exit conference, four o'clock for fleet, and five o'clock for workshop. Okay, thanks.
Would it, would it make more sense for fleet to go first since
I don't know how long they go.
Between four and five, it's not going to.
I don't know. Tony, I have one thing I just want, I want to do before we get done today. I want to introduce Simona Hiltner. She has been helping, she works in Mark's office, the auditor's office. She is helping and backing up Debbie, so when people see her, we know what she's doing. So, thank you for helping.
I knew that.
Hi.
She's been here before. Somehow, I figured that out.
Somebody else asked me who the lady was, so I thought, okay, we better introduce her.
Maybe Jeff might have my question.
This is making for arresting television, I'm sure.
As opposed to the rest of the meeting being riveting. Okay.
Okay, are you checking something, Max?
I'm a calendar, I just put this stuff.
Let's do.
No, what, what about doing the fleet at three?
That might be harder for other people who have the calendar.
It's mainly.
It's counting employees.
Sheriff, highway, health department. Brandon, later myself.
That makes sense. Many, counting workers, it should be a lot.
Well, you just need to know for sure, because then I'm going to guess that Mark, he changed it to three, and then now you guys are wanting to change it back to four, so it's.
Three o'clock, Mark. I don't, it's already changed.
They're going back to four here.
Three.
Four for fleet, yeah. Three o'clock. And Jeff said that was okay.
You're sure?
I am.
Well, of course, you got an hour.
No.
The exit hour will take a while.
Salam, let's do this for them, for them to react.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the exit conference was sort of.
So just go to work.
It's on workshop day. At three o'clock on twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Thank you.
Well, our liaison to the health department is Kathy?
Kathy.
Can you tell them that we need that?
Yes. Health department at five o'clock?
Uh, yeah.
Is that what she said?
That's what we're going to.
See if they can get their budget by then.
Start at five o'clock, they'll be first to launch and get their budget revised.
Get rid of some of these line items that are applying.
Hopefully, they'll have a new employee by then, and that should help.
I would move with adjourned days.
We have a motion a sec to adjourn all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those, word adjourned.